Welcome to the December fourteenth City of Broussard Council meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from the audience would like to comment on an item listed on the agenda, please fill out a blue card located at the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please stand for the pledge. Councilman Garrett, will you lead us in a prayer, please?
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, Almighty God, to lighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven through Christ thy Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one meeting. Do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
The minutes were provided in the council's packet. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Open for council discussion?
District one, yes. District two, yes. District three, yes. District four, yes. District five, yes. District six, yay. Motion carries.
Item three point one, approval of the October financial reports. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move second.
Our presenter tonight is our CFO, Karen Fontenot. Welcome, Karen.
Hi, guys. Um, your financial statements for the month of October are in your packets. Um, Burton is going to tell you everything you want to know about last year's audit in a minute, so I'm going to keep it short. I just wanted to give everybody an update. One of the things he's going to touch on is the spike in our intergovernmental revenue for the audit. Part of that is because of FEMA. We got probably over half a million dollars in FEMA revenue. As of the end of last year, they owed us about four hundred sixty thousand dollars, a hundred twenty-three thousand for Laura, three hundred thirty-six thousand for Delta. On November thirtieth of this year, they paid us for Laura. So they still owe us about three hundred thirty-six thousand. I don't know when we're going to see it. It's obligated. We're waiting for payment, but they are starting to pay out on those items. The other thing I did want to touch on is our sales tax revenues. Our most recent sales tax deposit was eighteen percent over budget. That puts us thirteen percent above overall. It's twenty-two percent above where we were last year and twenty-two percent above where we were the year before that. So they, they, they're kind of staying at a certain point and I think we all hope they stay that way. Does anyone have any questions about any of the items?
Yes, Karen, the, uh, the FEMA payment, is that a budget item that you make since we, we, uh, hoped to receive it or do we, well, how do we do that as a budget item? Is it a budget item?
It's, it's included in the intergovernmental revenue in the general fund. It was budgeted in last year because we did have an amount. So we booked it in last year because that's where all of the expenses were.
The outstanding, the outstanding money you're talking about, that's not going to be budgeted?
It's not in this year. It's in last year's numbers. The revenue shows in last year and the expenses show in last year.
So the, the four hundred thousand outstanding?
We're just collecting on what they already owed us.
That was shown in last year?
Yes, in fiscal year twenty-one.
Thank you, Karen. Just a little, a little note about that. Um, all of the FEMA, uh, documenting, documenting and paperwork that we go through is handled in-house through Mel and his team. Karen is, of course, involved with that. But, uh, Mel's group does a phenomenal job. We do not use an outside consultant and it is a rigorous process to keep up with it, to make sure we get paid. Uh, but your team does a very good job of that, Mel. Thank you for that. Any further questions?
Question?
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At law, I'm sorry, district one? Yes, motion carries.
Item four point one, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one Audit Report Review. Uh, welcome, Mr. Burton Colder.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. And going along with what Karen was saying, uh, Kenny, is we do accrue it because you incurred the expense, as was indicated in Mel's department, y'all incurred that at the time of the storm. And under accounting, since you incurred the expense, it's a reimbursable type of item. So we pick it up as revenue to match the expense against the revenue in the year it was incurred. Now, when she collects it, that's going to give you all added monies. Right now it's showing as a receivable, but it's going to be shown as an added, uh, cash item once it's collected. So hopefully that, that answers it. But she was absolutely correct and we'll get to that in a minute as far as the, the increase. Let me first start by saying we had a meeting last week, um, with the mayor, with Karen, with Tina, and went over the report, uh, some of the more detailed items. Tonight I'm going to present as we've normally done, kind of some of the high spots, but I think you get the point of, uh, you had a great year. Uh, as far as any findings, just to let you know, we have no management letter. We have no compliance. We have no internal control, no kind of accounting type issues that need to be mentioned going to Baton Rouge. We did have a three, uh, three minor verbal items that we presented. I think some of which have already been corrected as we speak and it's, it's not really, I think it's just to make the, uh, operations maybe a little bit more efficient. So I just wanted to point that out. Very good report and, and no findings. Uh, let's start with the utility fund. And, um, that's on page sixty-eight of your Bluebound book. Page sixty-eight. And this page, of course, it shows your water, your sewer and your garbage. And, um, we're going to start with the third and fourth. Well, let me, let me just start all the way to the right, which is the garbage department. You can see the garbage revenues last year were a million two ninety-seven. This year they're a million three, three seventy-six. So we, we're up about eighty thousand dollars in revenues, but expenses are up a little bit higher than that. They went from one million, one thirty-eight and up to one million, two ninety-eight. The biggest item, of course, is the collection fees that you pay or the expense that you pay to the provider of the service. And when it's all said and done, you ended up with a profit last year in two thousand twenty of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. This year the profit is seventy-eight thousand, six forty. It's still profitable and that's where it should be. It's basically just a service to the citizens of the community and, uh, and you basically charge based upon what you're being charged for the service. So it, it's working fine. Let's go to the next two columns, which is the sewer. The sewer revenues in two thousand twenty were eight hundred and thirty-six thousand. In two thousand twenty-one, they're up to a million seventy-one thousand. As you know, number of years ago, this, this council adopted a policy whereby every year we're going to try and go up so that we can eventually reach at least a break even point after considering all costs. And if you look at your, your expenditures towards the bottom of the page, in the sewer department, they didn't change a whole lot. They went up from two million, two seventy-five to two million, two eighty-nine. Read up towards, I guess, the bottom half, but in, uh, up towards the middle of the page and where it says nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand. That's the depreciation number for sewer. Uh, you've paid for those assets. Now, as we use them, we're writing them off and expensing them over time. So you've already paid for them. It didn't cost you any cash and that's the number we're shooting for. Our loss you can see was a million, four thirty-nine last year. Everybody sees that. It's a million, two eighteen. If I add back that nine hundred and sixty thousand or so dollars, it's still short, but it's short less than, than three hundred thousand dollars. So we're closing that gap and that was your, our intent, I think, a number of years ago, uh, to try and eventually get there. And we're getting, we're getting closer as we get to that, to that point. So I think within the next two years, guys, this city should be in the sewer. We'll look at water in a minute. Should be basically at a cash flow equalization, so to speak, with expenses. So that's a good thing. It's still a loss. It's a million, two eighteen on the loss, uh, but it's, it was a lot more than that in the past. The next department is the water department. A million, eight thirty-five in revenues last year, two million, thirty-four thousand this year. An increase of about two hundred thousand, some of which is, is number of customers, some of which is an increase in the rate. Uh, the expenses, on the other hand, went up from two million, three seventy-nine up to two million, five ninety-five. Um, here, the, the biggest item is the water purchases from the city of Lafayette. If you look at that, went from seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand to a million, fifty-five thousand. And Mayor, I think we had talked about that in our exit. One of our wells, I think is the old well here, that basically is no longer utilized. So we had to buy more water from the city. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. The old well behind City Hall has, has been decommissioned. It's now on, uh, we're buying water from L U S, which was pretty close to a trade-off because when the Garber rail well that the city owns came online, we were buying less water from, from the, from L C G. So it gave us the opportunity to turn this well off, save the expense of rebuilding the well and just, you know, buy water by the gallon as we need it and not have to create a few million dollars worth of expenses. I think the, the target was three, maybe a little north of three, if we had to rework that well.
So that's the reason for that increase in expenses. It's primarily due to the water purchases. Uh, they're up about four hundred or about three hundred thousand dollars. But if you look at your ba- bottom line, it's a loss. It was five hundred and forty-four thousand last year. It's five hundred and sixty thousand this year. But if you look at your depreciation, your depreciation is four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. So if I subtract that from the five sixty loss, then I'm only about a hundred and, and thirty thousand dollars short of reaching that goal. I think in water, it's possible during the next year, because we have an increase coming up at the beginning of this, next year, this calendar year in January. And then, of course, with the budget year coming up, yeah, I'm sure there'll be another increase as well, uh, effective July. But just with the one in, in, in January, assume, assuming we don't have too many repairs, it's possible that you guys could be close to being at, at a break even from a cash flow standpoint. So want to make that perfectly clear. We see some progress and that's a good thing. The final on, on the first two columns, the totals bringing in the water, the sewer and the garbage altogether. The total operating revenues last year, three million, nine sixty-nine and this year, four million, four eighty-three. So as you can see, up about four hundred thousand dollars from the prior year. The operating expenses, on the other hand, were five million, seven ninety-four last year. There's six million, one hundred and eighty-three thousand for the current year. Again, a big item is about three hundred and so thousand. That's an increase in the water purchases and that pretty well accounts for the increase here. And also the depreciation is higher. Looking at your grand total, it was a million, seven hundred thousand dollar loss this year after depreciation. Last year was a million, eight twenty-five. So if you close the loss, it's less by a hundred and twenty-five thousand and your depreciation is higher. So all that being said is within the next two years, I think I'm safe to say that if things progress, which they should, we should be pretty much at a cash flow break even standpoint. Make, make sure everybody understands that. I think that's, that's a good thing, considering where you were a number of years ago. Any questions on this, this page?
Burton, as we, as we make improvements on all these assets, whether it's in the sewer, the garbage, the water departments, we, we are making improvements, so you add value to that asset.
That is correct.
Our depreciation goes up, direct correlation to that. It's always going up.
Right, because you're adding assets. You're absolutely right, Kenny. And those, some of those assets are written off over thirty years, forty years or whatever for sewer.
We can go back on our, on our depreciation. It's continually going up on, on all our budgets. So unless we continue to raise rates, I don't see how we're ever going to catch that up to get to zero with the value of our assets, the depreciation going up and the assets value going up.
Well, I think what you want to shoot for, as I've said, is, is that, that loss that we're showing there is going to match with the depreciation. And it should, because you're going up on the revenues and the depreciation, as you said, is going up because you're continually enhancing and improving the system and expanding the system. So that's going to go up. And so that's correct. That depreciation is a non-cash item because we paid for them in prior years. So that's, that's the goal here. And, uh, you're reaching that point.
You think that could happen?
I think it's definite that it's going to happen, Kenny, within the next two fiscal years.
Okay.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, if I didn't hear any, let's go ahead and look to page two of a handout. You should have had a three-page handout. The, the middle page, page two, it's labeled up at the top right corner, uh, indicates, this is, we've always done this for you, breaking it out. It's a rough estimate. It's not an engineering prepared estimate and it takes into consideration commercial customers, residential customers, everyone, but it's rough average for all of the years. So it's still comparable. And what I want to look at is the water first. Water, you can see we have a steady progression of an increase in customers from eighteen. We were at five thousand ninety. We went to five thousand, two sixty-nine in nineteen, up to five thousand, four forty-two in twenty and fifty-six hundred and forty-six customers in two thousand twenty-one. So we've got a steady progression of at least two hundred customer increase in water every year. Now, the, 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 the revenues per customer per month, and it's made up of service income for providing that service of water and the connection penalties and other, but I'm going to look at the total. The total revenues brought in way back in eighteen was twenty-seven dollars, twenty-six ninety-nine. Then it went up to twenty-eight oh eight. Last year it pretty much was, was equal at twenty-eight ten and in this year we're at thirty dollars and four cents. So it's a steady little progression upward. And operating expenses, on the other hand, have been held. Look at where they were in eighteen. We were at thirty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents to provide water services to this, to the citizens on an average basis. Then it went to thirty-seven. We dropped it back down to thirty-six, forty-four and right now we're at thirty-eight, thirty. So two thousand twenty-one, we're less than where we were in eighteen. That's a positive sign. Our operating loss was eight dollars and thirty-four cents last year. It was eight dollars and twenty-six cents for this current year that I'm reporting on. And as I said, Kenny, if you add back that six thirty-four of depreciation and you see, as you pointed out, it is going up from six fourteen to six thirty-five, six thirty-four. Your loss per customer per month is a dollar ninety-two. So if we could generate approximately two dollars per customer per month, not a whole lot, you would be at break even from a cash flow standpoint. And look at where we were in eighteen. We were at five dollars and eighty-six cents. Okay, sewer is the next one. And you get a steady progression upward on the number of customers. Basically around two hundred customers, uh, per year, an increased average. And your service revenue and again, connection fees, total income way back in eighteen was seventeen dollars and eighty cents. That's what a consumer was paying to the city. It, it steadily labeled, uh, leveled off at sixteen and a quarter and in sixteen thirty-seven. This year we're up to twenty dollars and thirteen cents. But look at your cost. You held the cost way back in eighteen. We were at forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. Went up as high as forty-four, fifty-two in two thousand twenty and then forty-three dollars and one cent last year in two thousand twenty-one. Our loss per customer per month in sewer, including all costs, is the lowest on the page at twenty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents for all of the four years presented. And then you add back the depreciation of eight, eighteen dollars and three cents. Our loss is down to four dollars and eighty-five cents. So if you could generate an extra five dollars per customer per month in sewer, you would be breaking even from a cash flow standpoint. Okay? So look at where it was in all these earlier years. It's never been this low. Again, I see a progression to the positive, of course. Garbage, an average consumer of garbage, and there's a steady progression of two hundred customers as well every year, was paying twenty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. And I think y'all have twice a week pickup here. Most cities do not. That's correct. We have only one in the city of Lafayette. We used to have two. We down to one. Operating income was a dollar thirty-six, as you can see, uh, in the garbage department. And last year was at two eighty-five. The year before that was at ninety-three and then a dollar forty-seven. So it's, it's hovered around a dollar to, to two eighty-five, which was the highest last year. But it is positive and that's a good thing on the sewer, on the, uh, garbage side. Now, an average consumer in the city of Broussard that had water, sewer and garbage services was paying an average of sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents. That's pretty cheap when you look at it, um, for all three. You paid sixty-five dollars and thirteen cents plus the connection fees of eight dollars and eighty-three cents. So total income was seventy-three dollars and ninety-six cents last year. The cost of, uh, operating expenses was a hundred and three dollars and seventy-four cents. And you can see the operating loss, when you add them all together, was twenty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. But our depreciation is added back for water and sewer at twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents. And again, the loss that, it, so you'd need about five dollars and fifty cents added revenues on an average basis to break even from a cash flow standpoint. And if you look at it, it's the lowest of the four years presented. It's steadily going downward. Okay? It's almost. That's correct. So, uh, I like what I see and just keep up what we're doing. It's a steady thing and I think that was the thought. We're not going to just shove a big rate increase on the constituents here, the citizens here of this community. What it was to do is just gradually to get it to where it, it should be. So any questions on the utility operations? Okay, hearing none. Uh, let's go back and we're going to look now at the sports complex. That's on page seventy. And it's really the, it's, it's called the Parks and Recreation, um, Fund. That's on page seventy. Keep in mind, again, this was, uh, somewhat, it wasn't as bad, I guess, as two thousand twenty fiscal from a COVID standpoint, but it still had some COVID impacts on it. Okay, the op- operating revenues were four hundred and ninety-five thousand in two thousand twenty. There's seven hundred and ten thousand, nine thirty-three in two thousand twenty-one. The expenses for the, and we're breaking, y'all are breaking it out now between the St. Julian Sports Complex and of course, we have started with the Arsenal Park, which we obtained from the city of Lafayette or from L C G. Total, total expenses for St. Julian, very close to last year, guys. If you look at the grand total at the middle of the page, two million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand last year, two million, five hundred and seventy-seven thousand for the current year. And forty percent of that is depreciation. If you look at it, depreciation is nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. So forty percent of that total expense is depreciation. We've paid for the park. You've paid for it. You're paying the bonds now and, uh, and so on. But basically that park is paid for, but we're depreciating it or depreciating, depreciating those assets over time. Then you have Arsenal Park, which minimal this year, thirty-three thousand, nine sixty-two. The loss from operations did go down from two million, thirty-six thousand dollars last year to one million, nine hundred thousand this year. And basically half of that million nine is depreciation. Okay? Your interest income is your non-operating revenues and expenses. Interest income is about sixteen thousand dollars both years. The interest in fiscal expense or agency, uh, fees was a million, thirty-eight thousand last year and it's a million, fourteen thousand for the current year. Uh, so that gives you non-operating expense of about a million dollars. Nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand versus a million, twenty-three thousand. Loss before capital contributions and transfers. This is after interest, of course, and all of those expenses. Last year we lost three million, sixty thousand. This year you lost two point eight million dollars, two million, eight ninety-nine, really two point nine. And you, as you know, you have a three point one cent, uh, 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 half cent sales tax. It generated three point one million dollars this past year. It's not shown on there. So you're generating enough to cover this loss that's in here. And included in this loss of about three million bucks is a million dollars of depreciation, but put it in round perspective. Okay? So you have some cushion. You have enough sales tax to pay for it and, um, it is, it is being funded. Now, what would, what happened this year? You had transfers, of course, from the recreation sales tax fund, which is to pay for some principal and interest on the bonds and you had a small transfers from the general fund. The bottom line net position, which is the bottom line net loss out there, all transfers were made, was three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And last year was two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Of course, you've got a tremendous net position, a net surplus of about ten point nine million dollars. So you're still in good shape here. And the big thing is that it's on the upswing. The park is getting better established and, uh, you have a fantastic park and consequently the amount of sales tax being collected on the half cent sales tax is enough to fund it and to pay for the bonds and pay for the interest and still have a little bit left over. Any questions on this? Again, moving in the right direction. It's hard to measure. Kenny and I were talking before the meeting here tonight. It's hard to measure how much impact this park has on this city and will have. And it's hard for Youngsville and it's hard for Karen Crowe and all of them as well, but it does have an impact. And it's just hard to measure, but it does have an economic impact that we can't measure, but we know it helps. So, that being said. So I think it was definitely a good, good step in the right direction with this park. It costs a lot of money, but you're paying for it and you have enough revenues coming in. That's a funding source to pay for. So, any questions? All right, um, let's go to the first page of the handout. Very first page that, there was a three-page handout. And rather than look at this eighty-page report and, 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 and go through various, uh, pages in here, what I'd like to do is go through this one page, which you've seen in the past. And this is only for, for you guys and, and, uh, for the administration. It's not required to be sent to Baton Rouge, but it helps with the presentation here tonight so that it's not too lengthy and not too confusing. This is bringing everything, all of the funds of this city together. Uh, it's got the park in there. It's got the utility operations. It's got all of your tax revenues and so on. So let me start with that. And it includes your final budget numbers that was amended right at the end of the year, uh, by this body and, and it's shown here. So the total tax revenues were budgeted at seventeen millions, sixty-two thousand, nine seventy. It actually came in at seventeen million, six hundred and thirty-two thousand, came in five hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars more than what was anticipated. Your sales tax increase from fiscal twenty to fiscal twenty-one is up seventeen point three percent, two point four million dollars. Okay? That's fan- that's phenomenal. Now, thank Karen reported tonight. Basically we're up what, twenty percent as I heard, twenty-two percent? So that's even better. Uh, but seventeen is, is great, you know, so, uh, that's good. And you can see what, what the number was last year. It was fifteen point two million. Licenses and permits are pretty steady, but you budgeted one million, eight twelve. We brought in more than that at a million, nine oh three. Ninety-one thousand, five hundred more than you thought. And last year was one point six million. Intergovernmental revenues, this is what Karen alluded to earlier. Uh, you budgeted a million, nine thirty-two. You brought in a million, three thirty-eight. Five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars less than what was anticipated. And last year was five hundred and forty-four thousand. What she was talking about earlier, if you look at the five forty-four, that's generally what you get in, in, in kind of intergovernmental revenues coming from the state, the feds or the parish. But this year is a million, three thirty-eight. And as she pointed out, FEMA was up about four hundred thousand dollars that was recorded as we talked about. And the L C D B G was about three hundred grand. So it's about three hundred thousand there. It's a total of about seven to eight hundred thousand dollars, just those two. I'm going to call it unusual items. It's not ordinary type items. Okay, utility charges for services were budgeted at four million, four hundred and twelve thousand. They came in at four million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, seventy thousand dollars more than we anticipated. Last year was three million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand. We just looked at that. Parks and Rec, uh, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand on the budget, brought in seven hundred and ten thousand, about twelve thousand below budget. Last year was four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Fines and forfeits budgeted a half million dollars. Brought in four hundred and ninety-six thousand, three eighty-five, about forty-three hundred dollars less than what was anticipated. Last year was four hundred and sixty thousand, five ten. So that's steady. Uh, and you can see what it was way back in nineteen, only about two hundred thousand dollars. The, uh, next thing is interest. And of course, as we all know, interest rates are at the all-time lows. And so you had budgeted to bring in about forty-three thousand dollars on your interest-bearing accounts. You actually brought in forty-four thousand, seven hundred. Last year was eighty thousand. Miscellaneous revenues were budgeted at two hundred and thirty-one thousand. They came in at two hundred and sixty-three thousand, thirty-one thousand more than you thought. Total revenues for the city of Broussard were budgeted at twenty-six million, seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Actually came in at twenty-six million, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. Off a budget by a hundred and fifty-two thousand. That's phenomenal. Look down at the bottom of the page. The second to last line item says revenue variance from budget, point five seven percent. You can't get it any closer than this, guys. I mean, remember, that's less than basically one half of one percent. That's, that's phenomenal. So keep it up, Karen and Tina and the staff. Y'all are doing a great job with that. So the numbers that you get, it tells me that the numbers that are reported to you guys are accurate numbers, are pretty accurate and relationship to your budget that you've adopted. So that's good. Uh, and if you have good information, you can hopefully make better decisions. Okay, let's go up to the expenditures, how we spent the money. And you can see administration very close to budget, budgeted two million, six, uh, oh six, spent two million, six sixty-one, fifty-three thousand more than what was anticipated. Economic development budgeted three hundred and forty thousand or three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, spent three hundred Economic development, budgeted three hundred and forty thousand or three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, spent three hundred and forty thousand, two thousand more than we thought. Public safety, budgeted three million four hundred and seventy-three thousand. We spent three million three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seventy-three thousand dollars under budget. Fire department, budgeted a million four nineteen, spent a million four sixteen. Last year, we spent two point six million. Remember, we had, I think it was a fire truck or some capital outlay in there last year, and you don't have that, not much of it this year. Streets and drainage, budgeted three point seven million, spent three million seven ten. You can see last year was three hundred, uh, three million one oh two. That goes along with the expenditure for FEMA. If you have to spend that money, it's shown as a street and, and drainage expense, but you show it as revenues for the amounts that's gonna be reimbursed. Culture and recreation, minimal forty-three hundred dollars there. Utility fund expenses, budgeted to spend five million, uh, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand, spent six million one hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred thousand dollars more than what was anticipated. On the Parks and Rec, budgeted to spend two point six million, spent two million six eleven, six thousand dollars more than we thought. Principal retirement on the debt, a million sixty-eight was budgeted, a million sixty-eight was spent. The ex-interest in bond issuance costs, budgeted six thirty-seven, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, spent six hundred and forty thousand, three thousand dollars off a budget. And on the capital outlay, you budgeted to spend two million two fifty-nine, spent two million two fifty-two, six thousand seven hundred dollars less than we thought. And the total expenditures for the City of Broussard, you budgeted to spend twenty-four million one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Actually spent twenty-four million two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollar difference from budget. Seems like a lot of money, but based on twenty-four million, it's not a big percentage. Very last line item on the page, point seven three percent, less than one percent off a budget. That's great. You should be within five, you're within one. So that's good. Again, a good situation that the numbers that are reported to you, uh, are excellent and that, you know, you can rely upon them and make decisions accordingly. Okay, the very last line item on here is the bottom line excess or deficiency. Uh, very last line, it says excess deficiency of revenues. You guys had anticipated having a surplus on that budget of a million six hundred and ten thousand. That's when we spend everything. We have the interest on the bonds for the, for the utility fund and the park fund. And you actually ended up a little bit higher than that. You ended up at a million six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, forty-one thousand dollars more surplus than what was anticipated. Uh, last year, we had, it shows a big deficit, but I'm gonna get into this in just a minute, a three point four million dollars. Uh, but there were certain extraordinary items on capital outlay last year. Any questions on page one? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask you to go to page three, 'cause I wanna show you on page three what the true net operating surplus is for this city, and it was great for this year. And what we're doing with this, and they have all the, all the years presented, and, and it shows big excess or deficiencies. Like I said, in two thousand twenty, we started with a deficit of three million four eighty-one. This year, we started with a surplus, as I said, of a million six fifty-two. But let's take out these extraordinary type items. Uh, let's take out the grants and the LCDBG monies and the state grants, and, and we go ahead and do that. Let's look at twenty. That, that's deducting out a million four ninety-six. This year is only three hundred and forty-eight thousand. You might say, where's that FEMA stuff? Well, FEMA was extraordinary, but we had an extraordinary expense to offset it, so I didn't do anything with that. Everybody follows that. The capital outlay, that has to be added back, because those items aren't, uh, necessarily recurring type items. Last year, you spent five million nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand in capital outlay, and included in there is that fire department in, in expenditure as well. So that ended up last year, from an operational standpoint, you had about a million-dollar surplus. It was nine hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. A true surplus from an operational standpoint. Now, look at what that number is this year, comparing that to it, three million six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. That's your operating surplus for the year. That is great. It's better than any other year on the page. So you had a fantastic year this past year, considering all the obstacles, I guess, going into it with the COVID and, and so on and so forth. Any questions here? That was a, a state TIF, I think, that you're referring to, and that's a ten-year payout on that. And we talked about this at the time of the audit. There's a note disclosure in here, Kenny. I wanna say we have, what, a million, two or three left to be collected right now, or as of that. So we've collected about nine million dollars in rough numbers of that. It was a ten-million-dollar TIF that the state said, we gonna give you one percent tax from our coffers. So that's where you get it from. That's correct. You never did. And we talked about this, and, and Ray and I, and about, you know, what we're gonna do, because it's gonna run out, uh, from the state level, but it, it could be re-implemented and so on and so forth. So he's got some ideas on that. We did talk about it. So, uh, y'all are well aware of it, and I think your mayor's on top of it, and, uh, I'm sure he'll report back to you guys at a later date. No, it did not go away. It did not go. You're still collecting it, Kenny. You're still collecting it in, in, in nineteen, in twenty, and in twenty-one, all right? Maybe what you're asking is because there was nothing as capital, there was no capital spent from that fund. That's what I'm telling you here. But you still have to collect about a million or a million and one, uh, of, of dollars from the state on that ten-million-dollar guaranteed TIF that you were gonna collect. But you have never activated your local TIF, okay, which it could be done. Correct, two separate issues. We talked about that. Ambassador Caffrey?
The city funded that Ambassador Caffrey extension, spent ten million dollars. The state is reimbursing us one penny at a time for that.
From theirs.
From theirs.
Nor did that extra one penny, nor are they, right now.
No, there's no extra penny. That's just a repayment. A, a penny that belongs to the state gets sent back to us until that ten, ten-million-dollar debt is clear. There's one million dollars of that debt, debt remaining.
That is correct. And one million dollars to be collected from the.
That's, that's same, same difference. That's what I'm referring to, but there is no extra penny as a TIF.
No.
But in reality, if we wanted to activate it, anybody along Ambassador Caffrey could have had an additional one-cent sales tax?
Kenny, what you're referring to is a different item. Um, the repayment, it's called a TIF in the fund, because that's how it was named. That's just a repayment of a debt. The TIF you're referring to is, um, an oper- I believe it's an opportunity, opportunity zone area, Ryan? I'm sorry, thank you. Economic Development Zone, uh, where a TIF could be implemented, but has never been implemented in the City of Broussard. So they're both called TIF on the books, but one is a repayment of a loan from the state to the City of Broussard. The other is an economics, uh, development district within the City of Broussard.
I have misunderstanding about that, that we just didn't activate it along the corridor that we just paid, that we built the ten million dollars.
The, the state agreed to repay that ten million dollars back to Broussard, so that's where it's lied for, for, I don't know, several years, um, until that debt is paid.
Okay? All right, excuse me, there's no further questions relative to the TIF and the operations for the year. So basically, from an operational standpoint, we operated at over three point four million-dollar surplus here in this city this past year. That's great. Okay? So now, I'd like to look at page fifty-five in your report, and we're gonna make some analogies here, and I'm gonna give you kind of the number of days of surplus that you have available to you, which we always report on. Page fifty-five is a snapshot as of June of twenty-one, which is the end of your current fiscal year, uh, compared to the totals for two thousand and twenty. So I'm gonna focus on the third column and the fourth column. Total cash that you had, cash and interest-bearing deposits, last year at two thousand twenty, June of twenty, was eleven million nine sixty-seven. This year is up to twelve million seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. The receivables last year was three million three hundred and thirty-two thousand. This year, they're three million nine hundred and two thousand. Karen alluded to that earlier. As of the end of the fiscal year, you were probably up six to seven hundred thousand dollars that was owed from the feds on this FEMA stuff. And, uh, I think we're down to, what, two hundred thousand, you said, or three hundred? Three thirty. So some of this three point nine has been collected, obviously. Then you have due from other governmental agencies. Last year was twenty-four thousand, this year is six hundred and sixty-two, and this may be where also you have that FEMA monies. And in prepaid items was two hundred and seventy-two thousand last year, two hundred and sixty-six thousand this year. Total current assets, fifteen million five ninety-seven last year, seventeen million five ninety-eight this year, up two million dollars. Then your restricted assets, those are pretty much the same, the cash and interest-bearing deposits, six million five sixty-eight versus six million six forty-one. That's restricted cash for construction, for bond payments and so on, mandatory that you have that, and it is set aside. The land and construction in progress went down from thirteen point seven million, because construction was completed and transferred. It went down to twelve point six million. The net book value of your assets, that's on the books, that's being depreciated, was eighty-one million last year, it's eighty-two million this year. Total non-current assets, pretty much the same, a hundred and one million seven hundred last year, a hundred and one million three hundred thousand this year. Total assets for the City of Broussard, one hundred and seventeen million three hundred and two thousand last year. And this year, we're at a hundred and eighteen million eight ninety-five. So this is not a small amount that you're, uh, you know, have custody over and have fiduciary responsibility to take care of. It's a hundred and twenty million dollars. Now, the, that's the assets. Now let's look at the debts. The current liabilities of this city were five million sixteen thousand last year. They're four million nine hundred and nineteen thousand this year. The non-current liabilities, which is made up of your capital leases, your bonds payable primarily, and so on, was forty-five million last year, it's forty-four million this year. Look at this, too. You can see that the pension liability was three hundred and eighty-two thousand, and it's a million five ninety this year as a liability. Remember that this is the state pension plan, and you're required to pick up your share based upon the employees that participate in it on your books, but it's a state pension plan. But it's, it's mandatory. We're not doing anything different that we need to do for other cities. All of them that participate have to pick up their share. My point to you is that it's a state liability, but we have to show it here. I'm gonna get to that in a minute. Total, uh, total liabilities of the city were fifty million last year. They're forty-nine million two fifty-one this year. And then the big thing I wanna look at is the net position. What do we have left over after we've cleared out all liabilities as of June thirtieth to twenty-one? Well, we'd have seventy-one million three hundred thousand dollars this year. Last year, we were at sixty-eight million two oh four, the very last line item on the page. Remember what I said, your surplus increase, operating surplus, about, about three million dollars. That's pretty much three million dollars, okay? But let's look at this. You don't have seventy-one million dollars in cash. You've reinvested about fifty-eight point six million dollars in capital assets, which we just looked at earlier. And you also have some that's restricted for debt service. The items that are not, that we need to focus on, is the eight point eight million dollars restricted for sales tax dedications, and it's semi-restricted. I mean, it's got some, you have some leeway with this, and then last year was eight point two million. To that, I'm gonna add the, uh, restricted for external legal constraint. This is for the St. Martin Parish. There's a, it's a sales tax restriction there, that you've gotta spend those monies in that area, so that's what that is. It's, it's basically a sales tax restricting, restriction for St. Martin Parish, two point eight million dollars. And then, of course, the deficit is a million three forty. Uh, so I'm gonna add those two numbers, those three numbers, eight point eight million, two point eight million, and one million three forty. That will give me somewheres around eleven million six hundred thousand dollars. It's not showing on here. But the point I wanna make, remember, you're spending, from an operational standpoint, about twenty-two point nine million dollars a year this past year. That's sixty-two thousand nine hundred dollars, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and your surplus is about eleven million dollars, okay? So if I look at that, you're spending sixty-two thousand a day. We have eleven million dollars of undedicated surplus, not restricted. And that gives you a hundred and sixty-four days that you can operate this city without taking in a dime on just what you have available, if you continue your current spending habits, okay? That's pretty strong. That's five and a half months. Last year, to give you, for instance, you were at four point six months. So we've increased it by thirty days, okay, of surplus that you have available this past year. Again, and it, uh, uh, showing you that the operations were very good with three point three million dollars. Uh, also, we like to look at, that's the overall strength of the city as far as what you have in available surplus. We also look at your general fund. Many general funds are very strapped. Yours is not, has not been. And that one, I'm pleased to say, went from seven months of available reserves last year to eight point five months this year. So an increase there of a month and a half of available reserves in your general fund. Again, a good thing, okay? So, very strong, very good report, very good trend that I see both in utility operations and also in overall city operations. So, any questions? Karen, you wanna add anything? Okay?
I'll add this burden. I think, you know, I, you and I have looked at this once before, but generally, to sum it up, is revenues have been up. You, you mentioned it. It was, revenues are up about two million dollars in that last year, but in operating revenues, uh, two, three point six.
Right.
Expenses have come down this year, and it's, uh, it's a good trend to see. Hopefully, we can, we can hold that. The issue that Broussard is currently facing, and has been for a while now, is that with the explosive growth we see across the city, the council, we're funding projects. The council's been very engaged and helpful in funding projects that we feel are necessary, infrastructure projects. But we see our projects getting more expensive, and we see delays in the projects constantly because of the world around us. You know, getting supplies, uh, all of that, and it's getting more and more expensive to operate. But at least we're in a good position. But the, the goal for us is try to, is to keep up with the growth of the city, not, not let it get too far ahead of us. But we're having problems, just like everybody else in the world, supplies, supply chain problems, the expensive items. Uh, by the time we publicly bid items, and it comes down to actually the contract, starting work, things are going up in, in ways that are surprising.
Right.
But overall, our expenses are, uh, down, our revenue is up, and it leaves us in a good position to be able, be able to make the best decisions.
To be able to fund this growth, right?
That's right. We're fortunate to be in an area that is growing, and our city is growing, so we appreciate you giving the report and, and being so clear about things. Any questions?
You know, Mayor, I'd like to comment. We, we, for the first time in a long time, you alluded to, we have no corrective action to take in any, any department. We all, we up to our, our personnel staffing requirements that you did when you became mayor. We, we were always short, and we had corrective action for sixteen years in a row. There's always something that was short, that we were depriving ourselves or something, and, and now we have, we've upped the standard.
Right. No, you're on a good trend, Kenny, and, uh, and, and just keep it up. And I know it's difficult, Mayor, with a lot of the challenges we have, but, uh, hopefully, y'all gonna, I know y'all gonna be able to do it, and, uh, and this, this city will continue to grow.
To operate the city within a, uh, a pers- a half a percent of, of the budget that the council allows us to operate in is, uh, we take that seriously. When you, you know, when, when a budget is handed to us, Karen works very, very hard to keep us on budget, to help us create an accurate budget. Um, so I'm proud of the work you're doing, and I'm appreciative to the council for giving the city the funds it needs to operate and, and, you know, work through the problems that we have to face every day, so thank you for that.
Okay, any other comments, any other questions? I would like to thank the mayor and the council, the staff, for allowing us to work with you again this year. It's always a pleasure, and it's, it's good doing business with you guys, so we really appreciate it. Thank y'all. If there's no further questions, we'll just need a, a call for the vote.
Question?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yeah.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion, Karen.
And I just wanna say, we've already submitted the report to Baton Rouge, to the Legislative Auditor's Office, but they've got a backlog, so it's not public just yet, but it will be. Uh, so they, they did receive all the reports for, for the city, as well as the Broussard Fire Department, and also economic development. So everything's been done, and we had no big finding, no findings really at all in, in their reports as well for the Fire Department and BDC. Again, thank y'all.
Thank you, Bird. Item five point one, resolution number six nine two dash two one. A resolution authorizing the city to join with the State of Louisiana, of Louisiana and other local governmental units as a participant. as a participant in the Louisiana State Local Government Opioid Litigation Memorandum of Understanding. And any subsequent formal agreements necessary to implement the MOU. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move. Second.
So I can give, uh, an explanation on this item, uh, recently, within the last month, um, that Josh Gilroy reached out to the mayors of, of the municipalities within the parish and asked that we would participate in this opt-in. Uh, it needs to be done by council vote. There was a, uh, class action lawsuit settlement with one or more of the pharmaceutical companies, and our parish is going to get money uh, to be used for several reasons, the, uh, the, the reasons that will be approved is on the handout that I passed everyone. Um, I believe we're the last city to, to need to vote on it because our council, it needs to be done before January second, and our council meeting just fell last in line. The request that I'm making, and I think a lot of the mayors are joining me in that, is the, the money will come down to the parish, and we will decide as a parish group on how the money is to be used. Uh, there is definitely an overwhelming request that some of the money find its way into the local police departments. Um, I, there's, there's a need there, it is an approved use, not all of the money, but some of the money, because we need to be supportive of our first responders. They face this, uh, quite a bit, and I'm gonna ask Chief if he'd like to comment on that.
Sure, I think that anytime that you have any monies that are, that's dedicated to the fight and the opiate addiction that we have, is, is a plus for it, and very valuable. Right now, I know that, uh, our Narcan, getting through the AG's office, uh, it's a, it's a injection. I would like to see that if we do get this money, maybe, uh, go on possibly with doing the, uh, nasal, it's, it's kinda like, um, like a Afrin nasal mist, where we can get it, use the money, and then once you use it, you discard it, and we have it, uh, we can store it over here, and I think we could do that. Uh, where right now we're doing with the, I think with the shots, and you have to, once you do that, you have to go back to the AG's office, actual replenishment. But this way we can stock our supplies, plus it would give us education, anytime you have education and training, that helps, um, helps us educate ourselves on the, the opioid, uh, use and abuse that's going on, I think it's a plus. And I think that goes for, you know, any illegal narcotics that have been surfacing around with the fentanyl and all that stuff, this is very dangerous, and, uh, you got to have some of those supplies, I think it's necessary. Probably, you know, look to try to get the council to approve, I think it'd be, uh, very important, and I think it'd be necessary for us.
Thank you, Chief. So, um, with the council's approval, you know, this, this resolution will be submitted back to the parish, and they'll carry it forward and work through getting the money here, and I think they're gonna engage with us. I mean, that's been the promise on what the, what the best uses would be, but it starts with this first step of having a, a, a resolution approved by the council, so I can get that back to the parish. Tina, is there any public comment?
No public comments.
Any council discussion?
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, council. Uh, item five point three, resolution number six nine three dash two one. A resolution authorizing the city to accept the land donation from Cliff Gidry doing business as the Saks Condominiums LLC. Property location in section twenty-seven, township ten, south range five, east city of Broussard, Louisiana, containing one po- I'm sorry, containing point one three acres at the intersection of Second Street and Highway one eighty-two. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Second.
There's a map supplied in the council's packet, uh, Mr. Gidry reached out to us recently. Uh, he is moving forward in the construction of the Saks, uh, condominiums. There is the, the map supplied in the packet, there it is on screen, is the very point of the, uh, of the intersection there, so it's a small piece of land, uh, as, as phase two and three comes through for the downtown redevelopment. There will be a change in that intersection, and we may need some right-of-way there, and, uh, Mr. Gidry does not need that piece of land, so he offered to donate it to the city. It's not a very big piece, but as we rework that intersection, it'll likely be useful for us. Um, Mr. Gidry's not here, but Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Any council discussion?
Question.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinances for introduction. Item six point one, ordinance number two two dash seven one four. An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two operating budget of revenues and expenditures for an additional one hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars for the South Benard J-Turns Phase One. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I move to introduce. Second.
Our presenter tonight is Mr. Daniel Hutchinson with Como Engineering, welcome, Daniel.
Good evening. This is, uh, for J-Turns that are between, uh, Ambassador Caffrey and Hordy Farm. We know them as J-Turns two and three. Uh, we, uh, bid the job on November seventeenth, we had, uh, three companies that submitted, uh, bids. And, uh, they came over budget. With, with this being said, we, uh, we did two alternates for the J-Turns. We looked at, uh, a concrete, uh, surface and then asphalt. And surprising to me, concrete came out about eighty thousand dollars cheaper than asphalt.
How much did it?
About eighty thousand. About eighty thousand cheaper, and, uh, I've never seen this, I don't think you've seen that before either.
Concrete's usually three times more than asphalt. So if you're wondering what the impact of what's going on with oil prices and supply is doing to, asphalt is an oil product, so it's kind of crazy.
Um, with this being said, you know, we, we had budgeted this job about a year ago, uh, with things going up, uh, we had a, uh, we had to do some drainage at the, uh, we're incorporating the driveway to A Bears as one of the turnarounds that fall out. A- as the bump out, and the reason we did that, we decided to move it up. Because if we would've moved it further down, those A Bears and all that wouldn't have, to where people could turn off South Benard. So when we did that, we had to put, the way the road went, it was flat, we had to put a trench drain, which is like a continuous catch basin right there, which is about fifty thousand dollars. But there was no other way to drain it without making it a safety hazard with road water ponding on the road.
So Daniel, at, uh, the location you just mentioned, it's not only gonna be a J-turn, it'll be a crossover.
Yes, it'll be.
Right, stack, traffic will be able to stack in a turn lane, J-turn and crossover into those businesses, which is one of our goals.
Use as a driveway, pretty much, or turnaround. With that also being said, we, we adjusted the, uh, storage length. At first, when we had looked at it, we were about at a hundred and fifty foot of storage that's full.
Stacking cars?
Yes, stacking cars, and we had a longer taper on it for deceleration. When talking with the traffic engineer, he said, let's cut the taper down and give it more storage, 'cause you can use a, a section of your storage for deceleration. It, for future growth, he said, it's, it's better just to do it now. And, uh, we also had to add some curbing that we weren't really anticipating at the why-not-stop. Going out for that turn lane, going to Ambassador Caffrey. Because if somebody was going to use the J-turn and somebody pulled out of the why-not-stop, we all know you're not supposed to cross a double yellow, but it could be a safety concern, so we added some curb in there instead of scribing.
So Daniel, the, what, what the item is tonight is that we've done public bids, you had three bids in. Lowest alternate, which is concrete, has come in a hundred ninety-four thousand dollars over what what we expected it to be when it was bid.
Yes, sir.
Kinda alludes back to what I was talking about earlier.
Yes.
Prices are skyrocketing in ways that we, that are hard to expect and plan for.
With that being said, I, the low bidder, we had, uh, we had talked about it, and he said if this job would've bid a year ago, it would've been within twenty thousand dollars. And that's with the, the, that special drainage structure.
And this is for both J-Turns?
Yes.
One set, but it's two facing each other?
Yes, sir.
Tina, do you have public comment?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
District six?
Yay.
District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ordinance, uh, item six point two, ordinance number two two dash seven one five. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by adding the following maps, map F dash eight portions of Highway ninety, and map F dash twelve portions of East Fairfield Drive. Do we have a motion to introduce?
I move.
Second.
Um, if you look at the maps that are supplied, these items have gone through our zoning commission. Um, the first map is simply a residence, um, right off of Highway ninety, this is, uh, right at Max's campground, the residence there being zoned residential. And then the second map is off Marto Road, we annexed this property across from Marshall FBO Elementary recently at the corner of Marto and Fairfield. Um, since it's new to the city, it's now up for introductory zoning. Uh, it will also be a, a residential zoning. Do you have any public comment, Tina?
No public comments.
Any council discuss?
Question. District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item seven point one, ordinance number two one dash seven one two. An ordinance amending and reenacting sections eighteen dash two five eight of the Broussard Municipal Code establishing flood and drainage standards. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move. Second.
And it's, we have a second, um, uh, Como Engineering, Walter, I believe he's gonna present tonight, there's a mispress.
Uh, at the last meeting, we had a pretty healthy discussion about this. Uh, we're tweaking our drainage ordinance. Uh, it's, we're tightening up some language that was ambiguous. We're putting in, uh, some provisions where either Mel or I can, uh, make some decisions, if the proper, that can still come to you. But it takes, it takes, um, for, and the, and the, the primary thing is the twelve inches above the road. So either Mel or I can waive that particular requirement. Uh, and if the proper owner is not happy, they can still come back to the council. Usually they're not gonna be happy if we say no. Um, we tightened up some language on, um, wh- if people do work in a floodway, which is, we've passed an ordinance in accordance with FEMA regulations that we won't permit activity, certain activities within a floodway, we just tighten that up, um, to basically if somebody does something in a floodway, they, it freezes their permits until it gets corrected. Again, if they don't like what we're doing, they can come to you for relief. Um, the last thing is that what, what we have been doing for a long time is if somebody wants to pipe a ditch, they would hire an engineer, and then they would submit it to the city. They had to prove that it wasn't gonna cause a problem. We were, we were having a lot of problems with that getting what I consider to be the right amount of analysis. And, um, and it was just, we, it was, we were going in circles. And I suggested to the mayor that, uh, from here on out, if someone wants to do that, they can come, they can do that through, directly through the city. They had, they have a base fee of five hundred dollars, that's to reimburse the city for the expenses. But if we have a situation that's of higher complexity, then we reserve the right to negotiate, basically, a different fee so that the city doesn't take a, a bath on it. 'Cause you could have a situation where somebody wants to put in, pipe in a ditch, and we have to analyze a mile or two upstream, you know, which would cost the city way more than five hundred dollars. So, and we're actually doing one of those right now, um. So anyway, that, I, I think this is gonna re- this, what we were doing before just simply wasn't working. And we're taking a crack at doing it. This is what I really always wanted to do. Uh, the previous administration didn't want the city to, to do this. But what happens is a homeowner wants to pipe their ditch, number one, they have trouble finding an engineer who's willing to do it. And then number two, they're not willing to pay what it ca- what it really costs to do it. So we were just basically getting sketches of, well, this is what I plan to do, and no analysis. Where, whereas if we build in a new subdivision, we require a book of analysis to make sure we're not causing problems. And it didn't make logical sense to me that we had, we taken a subdivision that wasn't designed to be piped, we're allowing people to pipe it. And every time we've done this, it's caused problems every single time. I can give you, and not just in Broussard, Louisiana, in every jurisdiction in this parish, we are the only jurisdiction in Lafayette Parish that allows you to do this. And it's because it causes problems, so, um, I think this is a way that we can move forward and address things with constituents rather than just saying, look, your engineer's not giving me what I want, and it just goes on and on forever. I mean, I have some outstanding ones that go back to when I first became city engineer. I'd like to clear them out, give them satisfaction one way or the other. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
No public comment.
Any council discussion for Walter?
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
District one? Yes. Motion carries.
Item seven point two, ordinance number two one dash seven one three. An ordinance of the city council establishing and recognizing a fire prevention bureau within the Broussard Fire Department. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. Our presenter tonight is Chief Brian Chompine of Thank you, Chief, welcome.
Thank you, uh, this is just the final step in putting our fire prevention bureau in place, which will, um, help our businesses and will help us, uh, on the fire rating as well. So, I can answer any questions, I know we kinda talked about it last meeting, I'm not gonna go into any depth, but if you have any questions, I'd be willing to have any answer.
Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Any, uh, council discussion, questions?
Question.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
District one? Yes. District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Tonight is our last meeting of two thousand twenty-one, thank you all for being here, I wish you a very merry Christmas and a, a safe and joyous new year, thank you, good night.